Welcome, everyone, to the February 18th Board of Education meeting. Ms. Reed, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Mrs. Gardner. Mrs. MacAvina?
Here.
Mrs. Opaskar is absent. Mr. Sherbin?
Here.
Mr. Stovey?
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to start today with a couple of special presentations. Our School Foundation's up first.
I won't break it. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Kristin Mesa, President of Avon Lake City Schools Foundation. This is my third time this school year, my last time this school year. So we just finished our third round of grants for the year. We approved two. Nor the Explorer Animal Encounter for Eastview. I believe that's third grade. For five, I'm sorry, $300. And then Exploratory Learning with Sensory Bins for Redwood Leaps, for $500. Like I said, that was our third round for this school year. We ended the year with 11 grants totaling $15,917 for 16 different staff members across the district. We will be working on our Gold Star Balloon Recognition coming up here soon, so March and April. And I'm going to do a plug for our fundraiser on February 28th at City Barbecue from 11 to 8. And we are accepting new board member applications. So if anybody is interested, because I would like to eventually step down.
Are there any specific positions or just board positions?
Just board positions. We have 16 current members and we can go up to 25. We have rotating terms, I guess you can say. So you can have back-to-back terms and each term is three years. So you really aren't on a board and for more than six years, unless you want to step down earlier.
I know the answer to the question, but I'm going to ask you anyway. What's the time commitment for someone who would want to join the board, School Foundation?
For a regular, oh, for a regular board member, we meet once a month. However, there are five months we do not meet. We're usually in and out in an hour and a half, depending. Unless you have a specific job, I guess you could say, your outside commitments is a little bit longer. Like if you do fundraising, then you know your job is to find, you know, certain things to do fundraising. Treasurer, same thing. But normally, the hour and a half-ish. Yeah.
And if people want to apply, how would they get a chance to apply for a board position, then?
We have an application on our website. It is a Google form, so it's relatively easy to fill out and submit. We get those, we review them, and then we have a, like a discussion with that person to make sure they know what we do and how we do it and if it's still a good fit for them.
Awesome. Thanks, Kristin. We appreciate you.
Thanks.
All right. Next up is our Curriculum Instruction Report. Dr. Debe?
Yes, this month for our School Spotlight, we have Redwood Elementary. And Mrs. Weber is here with Mrs. Fitz and a bunch of students. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Hello. I'm Samantha Fitz. I'm the Innovation Teacher at Redwood. And today I have five of my wonderful students here to present their 3D projects.
Hi, my name is Vivian. And I would like to tell you that the name of our 3D engineering program is Tinkercad.
Can you maybe just explain what that is?
This is meant to be a medieval castle.
Awesome.
Two, three weeks.
Awesome.
Hi, my name is Caleb. I made a dungeon of a medieval castle. And the project was about a medieval castle because we were learning about it in Mrs. Contreras's ELA class.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kennedy. I created a food cart for a medieval castle. It has pineapples, apples, and pumpkin pie. My favorite thing about Tinkercad is grouping items together.
Oh, cool.
Hi, my name is Levi. The thing I liked most about learning how to use Tinkercad was putting shapes together.
Can we see what you created too? Oh, wow. Is that like a medieval castle, too?
It's a wall.
Hi, my name is Siddharth. What I liked learning how to make things on Tinkercad is like how you can make like really detailed stuff on there.
It looks like you guys can make your own toys. Like, that's awesome. Can you tell us what a Tinkercad is? Thank you.
It's just an app you use.
An app you use on your computer?
Yeah, to make our 3D projects.
My favorite thing that, the thing that I loved best about learning to use Tinkercad is that I got to be creative and test my skills of art and architecture.
The thing I liked best about creating 3D projects is working with my table mates and using all the pieces to see how it turned out.
My favorite thing about using Tinkercad is grouping things together and like making the different colors and different shapes.
My favorite part about creating the 3D project was making the 3D castle parts, taking the shapes we wanted to use and making it the right size, then molding it together to create the part of the 3D castle.
What I liked about creating this 3D project is like you could be as creative as you wanted of how you wanted to like build the thing that you wanted to build.
The thing that I liked best about creating my 3D project is that there's just so many possibilities and I had so many ideas and it took me forever to figure out which one I wanted to use.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? So if you were able to do your next big idea, since you had so many, what would that be?
The roof would probably be different. I probably would have just used a normal triangle. I used like a roof design. I don't know what the difference would have been, but I think the roof is more curved. And I just thought it looked more like a roof.
Sounds good.
Some things I learned from using Tinkercad were how to make two of the same item and how to search up specific pieces.
Some of the stuff I learned from Tinkercad was that I can make anything that I want and I can make it look what I like wanted it to look and like nobody could tell me what I want it to look like.
What I learned from using Tinkercad, oh, um, what I learned from using Tinkercad Engineering Program, I learned how to code names and make shapes bigger, smaller, skinnier, fat.
What I like best about learning how to use Tinkercad is like how to learn to like change the sizes and like how high and low you make it and like how to like group them together.
A thing that I learned using Tinkercad is that it takes a long time for your ideas to come into reality because we have to wait forever for them to print.
The thing I like best about learning how to use Tinkercad is how to use pieces like cubes and spheres to make a bigger project.
My favorite thing about using Tinkercad was also that I also got to like make shapes bigger and also smaller.
My favorite thing about using Tinkercad was using your imagination to create your parts.
Another thing that I liked about creating this 3D project was also you could make it very complicated or like very simple, however you wanted. And like, it would, it would probably turn out pretty amazing.
Any follow-up questions for any of that?
I have, I have a comment as I was thinking about the first time I ever used CAD. And I was 18 years old in my engineering program. And believe it or not, when we used CAD, we never got to print our parts. It was pretty boring. So the fact that you get to like design them, see them, and touch them at your age, you were light years ahead of where I was. And you get to then play with them on the other side. It just, I am so excited for you all. I just want to say, like, it's amazing. Just absolutely amazing what you're doing. So I have a question that anyone can answer. What was your life like before Tinkercad? How would you have handled this project without access to this app?
We never really started 3D printing until third grade. But it would have probably been really hard without Tinkercad. Whatever. I can't form words today.
Anyone else have any other comments? What was your life like before Tinkercad? How would you have worked on a project like this?
Before Tinkercad, it was bland and boring.
Got it.
Before Tinkercad, I felt like I couldn't make 3D projects ever and like I probably wouldn't ever get to make them until like older grades.
Before Tinkercad, it was kind of normal for me, but I'm just going to say it was bland and boring.
With, before Tinkercad, I thought like if I ever would be able to make one, it would probably become terrible. So that's about it.
We really appreciate you guys coming today.
Very impressive.
Thanks, thanks so much.
And I just want to comment. This is the world that our kids are growing up in today. When you think about how schools have changed, this is their normal, everyday existence. We didn't do things like that when we were in fourth grade or third grade or any grade. And this is the norm. And when people talk about, you know, education, here's education keeping up with the times. We've had the Innovation Program now. This is the fifth year of the program. And our Innovation Staff does a fantastic job. And it's an opportunity every week in all the elementary schools where the kids get 45 minutes. They get to create, they get to do things, and there's no grades. There's no homework. It's actually just using their imagination and working collaboratively on different projects.
Awesome.
Thank you, Redwood students and parents.
All right. Next item is update on reductions. Is there anything else on curriculum? Nope.
No, not this one. All right. Dr. Lawver and I are going to tag team on this. This is an update for the board on where we're at with the reduction status. If you remember, the Venn diagram that had all of the scenarios, we actually took every item on the Venn diagram and listed them in chronological order. That's why this might not seem like it follows a logical order, but it follows the order that was on the Venn diagram. And for anyone in the audience, this PowerPoint is available on the, if you go to the board docs, it's already attached there that you could also follow along. So the first reduction was reduce staff across all categories. And what you'll see is this is the same format we use for everyone. We had what was originally on the Venn diagram in red, the current status because we've made some modifications based on some of the feedback, timeline for implementation, and the action steps. So on this one, what we've done is we've, we're in the process of looking at reductions through retirement, attrition, positions that we can absorb through resignation, retirement. And then there may be, as we go through this, some additional positions that we're going through, looking at reduction in force that are related to the declining enrollment and the financial situation of the district. So this one will be pretty brief. We'd also looked at, and this one did not change, elimination of non-emergency overtime. I think the first step was to get our arms kind of wrapped around that. We were originally planning on implementing some things on August 1st. It has been implemented already because as we started asking the when and where questions, it became obvious that non-emergency overtime or overtime was kind of broken into a couple of different buckets. There could be times when folks are just working extra hours over contract, but it's not necessarily overtime. Like, for example, if we bring in a new staff member and we're doing some classified staff training, maybe there's an additional hour over contract that would be served. And we wanted to make sure that that was going through a process of being pre-approved before that happens. There are also times, you know, today's a great example. You know, President's Day is a great example where you have holidays or there are still events happening in the district. And that's overtime that really needs to occur or a day like today where there's a calamity day. You know, just when we were kind of on the cusp of calling school or not, you have folks doing building checks at the buildings. We have people making sure the heat is on in the buildings in case we're going to run them and seeing where the issues are. That's overtime that we obviously need to keep. But there are also other circumstances where there might be an hour here, an hour there, that needed to be pre-approved ahead of time. And we kind of went through the when and the where of those situations and implemented a process for that to take place and issued that directive across the district in terms of either extra hours over contract or overtime, depending on the situation. So that's been implemented. The next one on here is looking at athletics. Athletics operated at a several hundred thousand dollar loss last year. And so there's a draft completed of new pay-to-participate fees that will be coming to the board for their consideration in March. And once that is completed, then there'll be communication with the stakeholders as far as what the new fees are. So one of the things we took a look at, we are very much in a symbiotic relationship with the city and we serve a lot of the city with rec facilities, things like that. It was time to take another look at building rental fees. They hadn't been changed since pre-COVID. And we kind of coasted along on that. So we assessed those current rental fees. We identified new rates across all the categories in the district, including the next slide that we'll see is on fields. It's kind of these next two are the same topic. And we developed a new spreadsheet of fees. We began kind of a soft rollout of that at the same time that we were rolling out a new electronic permitting system for facilities across the district. We soft-rolled out some of this to some of our key partners, including the City Recreation Department. That's probably who it's going to impact the most. And so we've developed a new schedule of rental fees that will come before you and for you to take a look at. And we'll be ready to announce those on March 1st on time. We'll be ready to implement those on August 1st on time as well. But we've gone across all the categories, from classrooms, the Performing Arts Center, to gyms, usage across the district, fields, as I mentioned. And we're just, we're getting ready to roll that out in a more formal manner here within the next couple of weeks. But in some cases, this will be the first time that we've had rental fees for, say, a rec program, for our gym spaces and things like that. We've always collected on, excuse me, when we bring in a custodian after hours, for example, around a Saturday or Sunday, we've always recouped some of those fees. But we've never had a building rental fee on top of that for like an auxiliary gym space or something like that. So that will be, that will be new.
Now, and have we been in discussion with those that, so there's not, I guess where I'm going is so that there's not surprises. They're aware that this is under contemplation and we're not just going to send an email saying, here's our, I'm assuming there's been more of a relationship in this process?
We did. As we've gone through this year with several of our, so for example, we have some nonprofit groups that have come in and done some fundraising and things like that for their nonprofit. Empty Bowls is a great example. We started that conversation last year, so we're a year in advance of that. I've been talking with Aaron Fatch over at the city about how this will impact recreation programs. And obviously, he wants to know for budgetary purposes as well. So we've been talking that through as well. That's kind of part of the soft-launch process of having those conversations, absolutely. The next planned reduction was to eliminate full-day kindergarten, but based on the feedback we received, a lot of parents came forth and said, look, we will pay whatever the cost is, at least if there is an option for that. So we went to a full-day K to substantially cover the cost. And I'm going to give you numbers right now because we do have the potential to do a lottery if need be. Right now, based on the trends, I think we'll be able to give everybody who wants half-day a half-day spot. We still have, right now, open 47 all-day spots. As of right now, we have 122 registered for kindergarten, either full-day or half-day. Last year on this date, we had 135. So it's actually not much different than past years. Keep in mind, our enrollment's been dropping every year. So we're actually very commensurate with that. And I've been, you know, we had 33 people registered the day after kindergarten information night. And we've had about 10 to 12 registering each week. So with the lottery scheduled for March 18th, even if we kept up at that pace, unless something out of the blue happens, I believe everyone who signs up for full-day K is going to get full-day K based on the current numbers and the current trends.
What's the, I'm sorry, you said March 18th for the lottery. But what's the, is there a cutoff for registration or does it just stay open because you expect students might enroll?
Yeah, it always stays open, even during the year. So if somebody moves in, and again, we, you know, things happen sometimes, people's family situation changes, they move in and out of town, et cetera. So I assume that the spots will be fluid, assuming that we get close to that 120 number or just a little bit under, there still may be spots open. And, you know, we'll watch the half-day numbers, too. Our half-day numbers are obviously higher than they've been in the past couple of years. But we will make sure that we have the appropriate staffing and the appropriate sections, you know, if numbers do anything crazy. But right now, at least standing here today, I feel pretty confident that everyone who wants a full-day spot will have one.
Forgive me if you mentioned this already. Half-day numbers this year compared to last year? I know you did full-day.
We have 39 right now in half-day.
Yeah.
And this year in half-day, we have, I think, 13 or 14. So there are more half-days. But we also offered, we're offering three half-day classes where we only have one this year.
Got it.
So on reducing elective course offerings, what we've done is we're going through, right now, we have the high schools doing scheduling. We've looked at a couple courses that we've offered in the past where the department heads have said, look, these are things that have always had low enrollment. Maybe we don't offer these courses. As you know, a couple months ago, I presented all the new CC+ courses that we're offering. What we're trying to do is we're trying to match our course offerings with our staffing at the high school so that we can still offer the courses that we have, but just maybe not as many sections. So we've taken any absorption of staff and retirements and tried to work through it that way without gutting our course catalog at the high school. So this is, this one is still in progress. We've been looking at the building supplemental and extracurricular activities. Currently, we have some that have not been filled and our intention is to not fill them again next year because if they're currently vacant, why would we go back in? If it wasn't a need this year, we won't have that for last year. We're also looking at some supplementals. And a supplemental, for those of you who aren't sure, it's basically a stipend that either a coach or a sponsor of an activity gets to participate or to supervise that activity. So some of the things they're looking at, like one of the programs, if we have a program that's going away and there's a supplemental attached to that, for example, middle school teaming. Right now, we have team leaders at the middle school. Well, if we're not teaming, we don't need to pay a stipend to have a team leader. So those are the examples of things that, we're trying to keep them away from the kids. And we're trying to look at things that we offer that we could get by without having. Obviously, nothing is ideal when you're doing reductions, but we're trying to keep the programs as much as we can in place. And as I mentioned, we are eliminating the middle school teaming concept. It doesn't mean that there won't be opportunities to group students so they share teachers. But what it means is, in a middle school team concept, a teacher teaches four classes and that fifth class, they have their team advisory time versus a traditional schedule like a teacher at the high school or other schools would teach five classes. And so eliminating the middle school teaching, teaming brings teachers to teach five periods a day instead of four and an advisory.
So from a student perspective, what are the differences to their experience, teaming versus non-teaming?
So the difference for their experience, one would be the, they have an advisement period, which is used for a variety of different things. And so one of the things we'll be working with the middle school principals on is looking for ways to have intervention or enrichment during the day in a different format so that we're still meeting the needs of the kids.
So offering a similar experience in a different way.
Yes. Okay. So this might be shocking because actually, when I shared this with a few people, they were surprised to hear this. So we're eliminating the SOAR program, but we're still having gifted services. Our SOAR program only served 29.7% of the third and fourth graders with the gifted identification. Every year after we do our InView testing in second grade, I get tons of emails from parents who like, you know, I want my child in that program. Why can't we do that and so forth? So this is giving us the opportunity to change to a gifted clustering model, which at the March Board meeting, I'll be sharing with the board an overview of what gifted clustering is. We actually just did a, Alice Ogonnick, who's our ESC gifted consultant, she and I did a video for all of our teachers that they saw on Friday, our elementary teachers. And this will service 100% of our third and fourth grade gifted kids. Years ago, before I started, they used to only have SOAR in two buildings. Some of you may have had kids in that. And the kids actually had to go to a different building a day a week to get SOAR. And then during COVID, I tried to put it in all four buildings. But it was, still was a model that was not servicing all of our gifted kids. And this new model will service all of our gifted kids. And I just want to share a statistic from you. This is right off the ODE website. In Avon Lake, our state allocation for gifted services, last fiscal year was $86,101.51. We spent $525,485.63. So we spent about So we spent about $440,000 out of our own money, which, other than one area district, was a much higher percent than any other local district spent on their gifted services compared to what the state reimbursed them for.
So this is going to support 100%? What's the total on average of how many gifted students are, and you used a word, designated or?
Sure, so.
How many are we talking about?
I'll give, I can give you an exact number after we do the, we're doing in-view testing at the end of this month.
Yep.
So every second and fifth grader, fifth grade actually just had it last week, but they can score one of three ways. They can be gifted in math, they can be gifted in ELA, or they can have a cognitive ability gifting, uh, gifted identification. So in the old formula in SOAR, you had to have a certain level of IQ and you had to have a certain level of achievement. But this will have all, so I can give you a better number once we're done with the testing.
Got it.
But with the clustering, that means that within each, like in the element, in the three elementary buildings, if you were doing teams or whatever, a cluster would be a group of those students in the same classroom that do all their academic work together?
Correct. And in the larger buildings at Erieview and Redwood, they would be split into two classrooms per grade level. So like you'd have two third grade classes and two fourth grade classes that would have a gifted cluster. We still will have one gifted intervention specialist that will work with the teachers in terms of helping plan enrichment. There'll be some collaboration opportunities for all the gifted cluster teachers across the district quarterly to work on that, but it will be allow us to use a co-teaching model and a daily enrichment model versus getting service one day a week.
So just to recap this, we're actually saving money and expanding services?
Yes. And we will have a parent night on March 27th at 6:30 in the pack for a third and fourth grade parents whose child will be in the gifted cluster.
Where else can we do this? To save money and expand services?
We are looking, we are, no stone goes unturned, but this is, this is one that I always questioned since I've been here, why we were doing the gifted pro, I think the SOAR program's been great, it's really benefited the kids that we've had, but I never really understood how Avon Lake had a model that wasn't providing that for all of the gifted kids.
It also created a little bit of an interruption for the classroom teacher because if you had kids in your program that were in SOAR and kids who were not in SOAR, you know, they would be, for that one day a week, they would be separated doing their, their SOAR assignments. So this.
Sounds like when I was in grade school. That's exactly the model we had, and I'm pretty old, so.
As do I.
In your, one more, real quick. In your presentation next month, are we going to fully understand, so you, you quoted a cost, a substantial cost for SOAR. So if we're able to save money, I guess, what are the parallel comparisons between what we used to get for SOAR and why we're able to save money?
So the cost, the cost I quoted was not just for SOAR. That's all of our gifted services across the district.
Okay. So we'll have a breakdown of comparison between the two or?
Yeah, I can, I can give you what, what we will save by eliminating SOAR. It's about $125,000.
Okay.
So just briefly on this one, you know, obviously there's a need for an additional operating levy on the ballot that has been addressed with the May 6th ballot issues. I, I suppose the, the key point for us continues to be that these issues are very much intertwined because it's more beneficial for our taxpayers to do this as an emergency operating levy versus a current expense levy. And I'm not going to get into the 20 mil floor and everything tonight, Autumn, but the way it is, is structured is more beneficial in terms of cost. And we went through, so this is very much paired with, the, the additional 3 million per year is, is very much paired with the building initiatives of constructing a five through eight building and also allocating $20 million in repairs in critical infrastructure for the elementary schools to arrive at the, the 3 million number.
I just want to add to that, with that $3 million number, there were some questions that came up, like how did we come up with that? It was just a random number, and the answer is no. So all of these reductions that you're seeing that we've already done and are implementing in addition to the increase in costs and the, the fee rentals and all of that, we're making a substantial impact to our budget. So all of that is going to equal about $2 million. So if you think about what we put on the ballot in November was a $5 million emergency operating levy. By making about $2 million of cuts to our budget, that is where the $3 million came, that number came from, and I just want to be clear as to how that was calculated.
Yeah, it's a 40% reduction.
Okay, the next original reduction was to eliminate non-walking field trips, but in looking at what's best for kids, we're going to change to an approval process for non-walking field trips. So we, the kids can still have that experience. What it will be is field trips will be for instructional and athletic purposes only. They need to be cost neutral, and we're going to change the approval process. So all of the ones that are non-athletic, I'll have the final approval to make sure that they're actually cost neutral and they're actually benefiting kids educationally. The elementary school kids don't take a lot of field trips. I don't want to take that experience away from them, but we have a ton of field trips at the high school, and I think some of those probably need to be looked at a little bit more carefully to see what purpose some of those serve.
The Discovery Works, I don't know if anybody has seen that, it's just absolutely phenomenal. So I'm sure there's an opportunity to do instructional programming, cost neutral with the library. Are there plans to reengage or, or talk about what that could look like in the future?
That's on the list.
Yay.
Unfortunately, we eliminated summer school and jump start. Every year, we've paid for this completely out of COVID money, and it's, they're both wonderful programs. This would be something that I would love to bring back someday if our funding comes because it's, uh, they've both been great programs and I'm disappointed, but they are very expensive programs to run as well.
So I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to our transportation department on this one. Sue and Ashley have done such a terrific job looking at every scenario I've given them and, and working their magic on this. So the original reduction was to reduce busing to state minimum, took a very hard look at, at impact on families, impact to the community, and the current status of that is to reduce busing to a one mile radius instead of a two mile radius after we gathered some feedback and, and marinated on that for a little bit. We're ready to announce that here in March, and we'll be ready to implement that on August 1st. One of the things that we did was to identify all those non-eligible zones based on redistricting and the closing of Erieview, then identifying just key demographics like grade levels and, and where everybody was going to go, especially if you also factor in people remaining in home buildings for a few years to come and looking at those things and, and looking at staffing. So we're going to be releasing that sort of in dribs and drabs over March. We have some statistics that have gone to Joel and to Jim Crooks. We'll be releasing the non-eligible busing zones by building, including St. Joe's. We will also, we also have some statistics on students in each building, the total number, and then the number who would be eligible for busing out of that building. So we'll be releasing some more of that information during the month of March, and we'll prepare those maps, we'll communicate. And really what this will then on the backend come down to is, and Sue knows this already, it's going to be Sue taking a lot of phone calls at the bus garage and kind of walking people through it and talking through specific addresses. We've already had a lot of questions. It's not, you know, as the crow flies, like a straight shot as the crow flies to, for the pilots in the room, of course, but it, it, you know, is factored on like a normal driving distance or a normal driving route, you know, door to door, address to address. And so there are cases where you might, your house might be just outside a zone or just inside a zone, and we'll need to work through that on an individual basis. But when we release the maps of the zones around the buildings, probably 90%, 90-plus percent of those questions will be answered just by, you know, looking at the maps as we, as we start to roll that out here over the next month. So this is one that we obviously completed some boundary lines on, the closing of Erieview Elementary School. Obviously, a very hot topic in the community and one we want to be sensitive to, and, you know, when we close buildings, we want to try to do it the right way. So we've established some boundary lines for the building that was released back in February in terms of where folks would be, would be going. And then the moving timeline is going to pick up speed here pretty soon. Some of this is dependent on, on additional conversations we currently have with both unions regarding procedures for reduction in force and things like that before you can determine some room to room moves. But Jack and I are going to be going to the Erieview staff meeting tomorrow morning, and we have a, a letter that kind of outlines a timeline for moving procedures for folks that are going to be moving classrooms. So we've planned that out from roughly March 3rd all the way through the fall in terms of when boxes will arrive, when packing labels will arrive. We've color coded and ordered labels for each of the seven buildings or six, six buildings where people might be going, including what materials may come back here to the district level. So we've got that ready to go. That's all kind of happening behind the scenes, and so we're ready to kind of roll that timeline out to that staff first and answer any move related questions at that point. Moving is never easy. It is an arduous process. It will require us to use most of the Erieview gym as a staging area at the end of the year, but we also want to make sure that while we're thinking through the logistics of moving boxes and what goes where and what's going to go to this building and what can I take with me and those things, that we also provide and, and give space to that building to say goodbye to their building with dignity. And, and I think that's a, that's a huge piece of this. We wanted to make sure that was on this presentation this evening. It's important to us that as much as possible, school doesn't come down around kids, that we continue to provide those opportunities, you know, to the very last day of school. And so we're very cognizant of those things as we're going through these processes. But decommissioning and taking a building offline is never easy because it's everything from, you know, what cameras we're going to keep operational and sound systems operational and, and classroom amplifiers and things like that. There's a whole technology decommissioning schedule that goes into play, and we're thinking that through with the tech department to, you know, what desks and chairs may be needed or not needed, to even the more granular level of, of items that would fit into boxes. So we're working through all of that. Tomorrow is a big step in that process as we roll that out personally with, with the staff over there, and then we, we, we start, you know, really moving forward with some of those, with those logistics.
When will we have more information on closing with dignity opportunities, not only for the school itself, but the community?
So Mrs. Isley-Jones and I had a meeting scheduled, and unfortunately, it got canceled last week. So we are meeting again, most likely by the end of this week to discuss her staff. She has worked with her staff and some of the PTA members to come up with some ideas that we're going to roll out and implement and get some communication out to the community because we really want to give the community an opportunity for people who have been, who attended that school to be able to come back, reminisce, go through it again, and feel that that's really an important step in closing with dignity. So we're going to work through those details, and we should have some of those plans finalized here within the next few weeks, and they will be sent out to the community so everyone will be aware of what kind of events we are going to have around the closure of Erieview.
Just on that personal anecdote, the elementary, middle, and high schools that I attended all have closed in neighboring districts. So I've kind of been through this personally, it seems to follow me, but I, I know we've done open houses in, in those situations and had kind of a chance to say goodbye, which is great. There was also some opportunities sometimes with going through, and I know you talked about this at the last meeting, technology and stuff that you're going to try and retrofit if there's things that would be used for other buildings. But I know like our high school, when it closed, they had some things that were left over that if people wanted nostalgia, they could purchase, they put it on eBay kind of site kind of thing. And, and so I don't know if there's opportunities like that. Once everything has kind of been at the last stage and so forth, there might be some mementos that people might want to take from the, from those buildings if they're not going to be used.
That's a great point. Part of the process will be a public auction at some point of, of educational surplus items, whether it's furniture or whether it's, you know, someone wants the old fire bell or something like that. You know, there, there have been items mentioned to me. The best way to do that is to offer that to the public at, at a point in time. So once we get through some of the initial logistics, moving company has come in and, and moved things to different locations, maintenance has gone through and done the rest, then probably looking at mid to late fall for some form of a surplus auction. And we've already had some conversation with a potential vendor about that process. This one's easy, I can just say it's postponed. Keep it real short. Just based on, on, you know, pending the results of, of May 6th, bond issue obviously would drive our need or, you know, hopefully not a need for an increased PI levy on the ballot. So that item has been postponed pending the results of May 6th.
All right, and lastly on the list, we originally had on the list that those five sports that require facility rentals would be eliminated, but those will actually stay in place, and this action steps are the same as the other athletic one. They will just have a higher pay to participate fee to help offset the facility rentals. So we're happy to keep all of those sports, and that is the end of the reduction list.
Can we go backwards? Because as you were kind of going through these, I didn't, I had questions in my mind, didn't ask it right away, but on, on the very first one on the staffing, can we kind of revisit what happened with the retirement incentive? I know you've shared some of this information in the past, but what we offer, how many people took it, how many people were eligible and didn't take that? I don't know if we have that data.
So we had the retirement incentive, we actually had, I believe, seven certified take the, the position. We had one administrator, one exempt staff, and then we had a couple of classified staff as well. We actually had quite a few more people eligible to take it, just on the certified side. And it's kind of hard because you have to look at each person differently with their years of experience and if they had a prior career and so forth, but there were at least another dozen that could have taken it on the certified side.
Okay. And we have plans to honor all those folks who are retiring at the end of the school year?
We do.
Okay. Other questions for Dr. D.B.?
Or especially Dr. Lawver.
Yeah.
I would just like to add and, and thank our staff. This is, this has been quite an undertaking. If you look at all these pages here, I think there's 15 or so things that we've had to concentrate and spend some time on and, and thinking through, and these are not easy decisions, nor are they easy to figure out, you know, like Ned had said about Sue Cole and her staff with the busing. I mean, to redistrict a district and then to figure out bus routes that were at .25, then go to two miles and then back to a mile because we got some feedback from parents, this has been a ton of work. And I just really want to thank our staff for being patient with us. These are not easy decisions. They take a lot of thought, and I'm not going to tell you they're all going to roll out perfectly either. We're not going to be, we're not going to be, you know, misleading about that. You know, we, these are things many of us are experiencing in our careers for the first time, and so we just ask for some grace and patience as we work through these very difficult decisions and this difficult work that's ahead of us. So thank you to everyone for having patience and understanding, and thank you to all of our staff for, for all of the hard work because it's been, it's been many, many discussions and hours of time.
So Jo, I just have a question. I know in November, we had like, as Dr. D.B. alluded to, the Venn diagram of what would happen if one passed and the other didn't. Is there another similar diagram for May? Because we know, we asked for five, and we're now, we're cut two, and we're supplementing with three, but if we don't even get the three, it begs the question, are there further cuts that will then need to be made?
I don't think the list will change. They will just be deeper than what they are, what was presented today.
Okay.
But we wouldn't need to contemplate those till the fall, correct? Because we're, we've got a, you know, May is here, we have November. I know, I know that we're not, at least those, I'm not, I was not willing to wait till next November to put something on the ballot because it's getting harder and harder to not know and have some confidence in the future we're going. But Mike, to your point, I don't know that, we're not planning on talking about any of that until we kind of round into next year, correct?
No. So as you saw in the presentation, many of these reductions are taking effect August 1st. So we'll announce them March 1st, taking effect next year. So even if that is the case, they would be things that we would have to look at then for the following school year.
This is, yeah, this is definitely not an easy thing to, to, to deal with, and I know, you know, the most sensitive of all is our staffing and, and trying to maintain where we're at. You know, I, if, if someone was to ask me, you know, so, you know, what's the biggest thing at risk if we continue to not pass levies? It's our course offerings and our class sizes, and the impact on our staffing is just, is, you know, it's, it's really hard to even wrap your brain around where that would go. And we don't, we don't want to go that path, but I think what we're laying out with this comp, with this, as Joel said, we had a $5 million operating levy on the last time. said, we had a $5 million operating levy on the last time. We've cut $2 million of that ask to, to get it down to three. And we, we hope the voters will consider that when they, when they vote in, in the spring, that this is, you know, a compromise from where we've been.
And I think Ned alluded to this, that the five and even the three ask this time is also intertwined with passing the bond issue. That if that doesn't pass, we don't get a new school or the repairs at the other school, then even the three is not enough to get us through.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. With that, we're going to move to, we want to have all that discussion before our public participation, which is next on our agenda. Public participation at our board meetings is permitted to allow members of the board, or members of the public to address the board on issues of public concern. And it's not intended as a forum for extended conversation or two-way dialogue with board members or district officials. The primary role of the board is to listen and reflect on your comments. Sometimes board members may respond or ask questions, but not always. But whether we respond or not, your input is valued. The public participation session is for general comments, matter relevant to the school district. Those who wish to address the board must complete a comment card. Each person will be given three minutes to speak until a total time of 30 minutes is used. So Dr. D B, do we have anyone who?
We have three people that have signed up this evening. First one is Allison Dubowski.
Come on. If you could just speak into the mic, we'd appreciate it.
Well, I like how it said five at first. Give me a second to get a deep breath because I thought when I read, if I ran out of time and not everyone used the 30 minutes, I can go again. So I tried to shorten this one, take a deep breath and go real fast. But I'm happy to email you all of this afterward.
Thank you.
Ready, set, go. My name is Allison Dubowski and I live at 32106 Teasal Court with my husband Avon, daughter Peyton, currently in her second year in the LEAP program, and son Liam eagerly waiting his turn to start LEAP this fall. I requested to speak with you tonight to address some concerns and questions that I have regarding the LEAP's tuition for next year, the kindergarten format for next year, and how hard of an impact the failed levy changes are for parents of young children in the district, the very people that are often always voting yes, and the biggest cheerleaders for a district. During election season, my house had signs to show support for many of you sitting up there as well as the levy. My husband and I are teachers who value public education. We voted yes for every single school levy since turning 18 and continue to grieve for Avon Lake's failed levy with all of you. I've put nothing but faith in you as our school leaders and never questioned the hard decisions that you've had to make. However, over the last month, I've found myself with many questions left unanswered or unexplained. My eyes fill, fill with tears anytime I talk about this because it is so personal for me and my family. I want my son to have the same experiences at LEAP that my daughter received. I moved to Avon Lake for great public education. Peyton is thriving, making friends, coming home, clapping out syllables, and recently started sounding out letters on her Valentine's cards. We have Mrs. Miller and the entire LEAP staff to thank for that. Concern number one, where were the warnings about the increased LEAP's tuition? Not a single board meeting or district public communication mentioned the LEAP's tuition being something that would experience a more than double, almost triple increase. The option to save money by paying all upfront has also been removed. Why is that? When I emailed Joel about this and thank you for your responses, she said my concerns were valid and heard loud and clear. This was not something mentioned until the night it was voted on in January. Further, at that board meeting prior to approving the increase, it was asked, I believe, how much is the current cost for LEAPs, to which Mike said $2,400. This was an honest mistake that someone else could have and should have fact checked, but nonetheless, that number was not right. $2,400 is the current full day kindergarten amount. So the board voted with incorrect information. The current LEAP's cost is $1,250 with an option to get 10% less if you pay in full. So I am asking the board to reconsider their vote, which increased the amount to $3,140. If you believed you were only raising the amount by 740, then it should be set at $1,990. Concern two, confusion and lack of fair options for kindergarten. Who made the decision to how many full versus half-day kindergarten options would be offered? Who made the decision that Eastview should only have full day options? My neighbors and I tried to ask these questions during the kindergarten information meeting night, but they were ignored. We live in Eastview District, but if we needed to do half-day for financial reasons, our daughter would need to be bused to Westview. While I'm confident Westview teachers are fantastic, it would mean my daughter would have bounced to three different elementary schools by first grade. By only offering a full day program at Eastview, it sends the message that we can only attend our homeschool if we are financially well off. While I practice this and still had two paragraphs, maybe a random person will want to read it later. If not, I'll be happy to email you it. I feel that parents of young children are unproportionately being hit the hardest. My bill to this district for public education next year is $9,450 and I don't know how I will be able to vote yes for a levy for the first time in my life when that's the bill I have to spend for public education. Thank you for listening. I'll be happy to email the rest.
Our next speaker is Darrell Everett.
Good evening. My name is Darrell Everett. I live at 432 Crestwood Drive here in Avon Lake. As background, my wife and I were very fortunate to discover Avon Lake when we moved here as empty nesters in 2021, right after nine 11. I was 56 years old at the time. This year I will turn 80. Every year I have paid my property taxes in full and on time, and I have quietly supported the Avon Lake schools all this time. This year the school board has chosen, as we've heard tonight, to place a modified bond issue and a modified levy on the operating, on the May ballot, following last November's dispute. As you are aware, this past year, the Lorraine County Auditor's Office performed a state-required reappraisal on our properties. I received my notice of the reappraisal in mid-August. I received my real estate tax bill for the first half of '24 in mid-January this year. And I would like to share with you the significance of that reappraisal for me personally and probably for you, because for tax purposes, the reappraisal was made retroactive to the first half of 2024. For tax year 2023, exactly $4,343.95 of my property taxes went to Avon Lake schools. It represented 64% of my total property tax bill. For tax year 2024, $5,656.56 will go to Avon Lake schools, an increase of $1,256.31 or 29%. This additional revenue to Avon Lake schools, I believe, is not the result of any additional levies or bond issues that had been passed previously, but it will benefit the schools simply because my property was reappraised as yours has been appraised. I suspect if you look closely at your tax bills, you will see a similar percentage increase in that portion of your property taxes that will be funding Avon Lake schools. This past Saturday, I received the school's quarterly newsletter. And according to school board projections, the bond issue will add only $96 per 100,000 of current property valuation annually. The operating levy will add only 69 per 100,000. Combined, if passed, these two ballot issues will add another $901.63 to my property taxes as calculated by the formula provided in the newsletter. I will be paying to Avon Lake schools a total of $6,501.89 or 76% of my total property taxes compared to the 64% that went to the schools previously. That will represent a 50% increase in my tax contribution to the schools for tax year 2023 and a total property tax increase of 41%. As I mentioned earlier, I will turn 80 this year. When I turned 65, I applied for and was granted a homestead provision. During last fall's campaign for these two issues, I spoke with a representative from friends of Avon Lake schools. I asked if there could be or wouldn't be any cutout for seniors on fixed incomes. I was told that I could apply for the homestead provision, but I already have that. There was no other consideration given. So here's the effect of the homestead provision on my property taxes. For tax year 2023, I received a reduction of $486.76, less than $500. For tax year 2024, I will receive a reduction of $463.72, 5% less than I received previously, despite the significant increase in property tax valuation and the subsequent 41% increase.
We're going to ask you to wrap things up. Okay. Thank you.
I will. On a final note, my wife and I are beneficiaries of the social security system. The increase in benefits this year is 2.5%. But Medicare says I have to pay more out of my social security. So I get $816 net increase between my wife and I for the year. That's $100 less than the $900 you're asking me to pay as an increase if the bond issues pass. So I thank you for your time and I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell.
Our final speaker is Wayne Lenson.
First of all, I want to thank all of you. I've noticed that you look at the speaker and you're not on a cell phone and you're not writing things down like you see in other council meetings or school board meetings. So I thank you for that. Question that I have is that, first of all, you people on this board, it's a thankless job. You cannot please everybody. You can't do it. But what I've seen tonight, there's made a big dent in trying to do that. I have to ask you, in the last two years, how many new homes have been built in Avon Lake and then occupied? I know the number. I've talked to the folks in the building department. Also, what's the average price of those homes? I don't think there's a home that you can buy in Avon Lake for 300,000 or, or under, unless you're building it yourself on a real small lot. Anyway, I know, I think about 60% of your, of my taxes go to the schools. And of that, I wish that you could explain to everybody, or maybe show everybody, why with all these new homes going in and the price of them, why do we still need more money? You can tell, but show, have something that maybe you could go right down to the basics and say, well, we're going to take this and we're going to show you where all this money goes. What I'd like to know is, whatever happened to that lot of money?
Ray, do you have?
I went through that. I know where. Anyway, I'd like to ask you about a reduction in the one-mile radius. That will then probably fill the bus seat positions on the buses. So many times I see these buses, I try to count how many kids are in it, and I never see a full bus. And I'm wondering, these bus routes, could they be done a little bit different or changing school times where you could, one bus could pick up the full 30 or 40 kids and then bring them. It's costly with diesel fuel, I'm sure. Last, not least here, I wish we would have these coffee meetings at different times and at different places. You know, I don't like latte coffee. I like the, from the old coffee pot that's never been washed, that kind of thing. And these are the kind of meetings that I'd like to have, you know, instead of, instead of those kinds. But anyway, I feel you're doing a great job. You can't please everybody. We should do what Texas does. Soon as somebody reaches retirement age, property taxes are froze. Be nice. I'd vote all the time. Thanks again for your time.
Thanks, Wayne.
We have one additional speaker, Emily Hanson.
Hi. Sorry to come in last minute. I'm Emily Hanson, 32282 Brandon Place. I am an year review mom. I'm not here to sob about it, not right now. I've done enough of that. But my question is mostly, how is the additional 4.6 million being used? Not even just from my perspective, but I know a lot of us like to think that people don't get their news on Facebook, but unfortunately, a lot of people do, especially the population that is not here today and is not educated on school issues. So I think it would be very helpful if that was communicated clearly, not just on a school newsletter, although that would be great, but also if we could have easy graphics to bite back keyboard warriors on Facebook, just easy informational things that don't even mention the word millage because frankly, those people don't read it or care or take the time to understand it. So basically, I just think it would be helpful to have things like that and to televise Board of Education meetings. I know that it's been mentioned that things could be edited or taken out of context, but I think that's less likely to happen if we have the full video and can just post that in response to something. So that's really it. If we can just get the clear information with clear ways to communicate it very simply and very easily in a quick little snapshot.
Emily, do you envision that? And I reached out to someone who was, I think, trying to ask this question, but I think it, sometimes when we seek to ask questions, it ignites whatever emotions people have as they're on social media. But I guess my question is that, are you thinking that this information is something that arms people in the community with easy access to then share it? Because I find that oftentimes we'll create it, we'll put it in the channels we know, but we're not seeing it everywhere. So I guess I just ask, are you looking to tool people up so they can be better partners and have something they can share out?
Yes. So my hope is people like me, people like I'm on the year review PTA board, and I know everybody else on the year review PTA board and the other schools, PTA boards, other parents want easy ways to just get the information out there without having to have a stupid, long argument with people that frankly, sit there all day for the sake of arguing with people on Facebook, which is not what we're there for. We're there to try to help the schools, to try to educate people and help them make a, their opinion, an educated decision, right? Which a lot of them are not necessarily.
Yeah. Well, and I do think people are, are, sometimes, like in this case, I think somebody was trying to ask a question, but maybe the answers they weren't getting were answers, but rather sympathy or I don't know.
Right.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Jim. I was just curious.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just, just have one, one comment. To the gentleman, I forget the second speaker who was calculating how much his taxes were up. There is an offset on there that we're not putting on the newsletter. And I don't know what, oh, there he is behind Meg. There, there is an offset. So even though the totals in those, when you add up those two numbers, say 165 per 100,000, we do have a bond that's rolling off, which is roughly
63?
60 some dollars. So really the net of more of the increase would be closer to 100, $103 per 100,000 net of what you're paying today. So it's not that full 165 would, would not be an increase if, if both bonds are passed because there is an offset that's also coming off the books next year. And to the other gentleman that, the coffee talks, I'm sure I, Joel, anyone else, if you want to host a coffee talk at your place, at your time, at your type of coffee, we'd be more than happy to come and speak to your group as well.
There's going to be an increasing panic.
That's fine. That's fine with us.
No panic at all.
Yeah, that, that is fine with us.
Yeah. And I guess my reflection is, I mean, if I think back to, so where are we? Four board meetings removed from the last levy not passing. At every board meeting, someone has a passion about an issue that we're having to make a difficult decision about. And kindergarten tuition, LEAP's tuition, athletics, we had three sports teams here that meeting, year review, we had, you know, all these things keep adding up and, and we're trying to work through them the best we can. And they are, but like Joel said, they're very difficult decisions and, you know, they can't be solved without, without money. And, you know, the four and a half million thing, we've talked about at every board meeting since the election. It was in our forecast, but it's being portrayed like this is money we didn't know about. I, I look back and take a broader view and say, there's two things that if you want to have perspective about where we're at in Avon Lake, and that is, we have not passed a new operating levy since 2013. And we have not, we have not built a new building since 1970, an educational building since 1970. Those things are, are the things that we're working against. And there's a lot of noise and smoke and whatever, but it, it doesn't, if all of us in the room today made the exact same amount of money that we had in 2013, it would be a tight budget to live on. I was looking up inflation numbers. I think the numbers were around 35% in those, in the last 12 years. So, you know, these are all things that we're working through. And, you know, when you put them all together in a, in a graphic and a long presentation today, there, you look at each one individually, but collectively adds up to, to a place where we need to get out of this situation. out of this situation, and hopefully, our May election will help us towards that goal.
And if I could add, for anyone who didn't, wasn't here at our last board meeting, the January 21st board meeting, we do have audio recordings of each of our board meetings embedded in our agenda for that individual board meeting. On January 21st, we did an extensive presentation that kind of gives you an overview of what our November forecast looked like, to what the updates were in December with some of those reductions. And then it also looked at the articles that were in the newspapers talking about the additional revenue that was quoted due to reappraisal and how the school district worked through that, factoring that into both our November and December forecasts. So all of that revenue that has been mentioned in the newspapers had already been accounted for, for the majority of that revenue. So that presentation, as well as the audio, are both available on the January 21st board meeting agenda, and you're always welcome to ask us questions as well if you have further questions. Yes. Actually, Dr. Dv just pulled up the financial update, and you'll see the process that we went through from July, when those letters went out, to where we are today. You also see the difference in our forecast, why we put a November forecast out there where required by law. We also said in November that we would update that forecast as we work through the reduction process. We will continue to update that forecast, so that way the board and our community can see where our numbers are. But the presentation from January 21st encompasses everything we've been talking about from a financial perspective for the last several months.
And finally, the comment about Texas, and I agree, we should do something about property taxes and seniors. Unfortunately, that's something that you guys have to talk to our state reps about and lobby them. We're just, we're playing the hand that we're dealt, and this is the way that schools in Ohio are funded, and, and we, we don't agree with it the way Ohio does it, but until, you know, there's a groundswell of people who want to actually start, you know, putting pressure on those state reps to change it, it's not going to change.
And I mentioned this last month. It's complicated. The lawmaker is complicated to make it so. The average person can't just pick up, you know, their tax bill and understand what it says. You have to really dig into it. You have to dig into the House Bill 920 tax reduction factors. You have to look at individual levies, because each type of levy is calculated differently with your taxes. Our lawmakers do not make it easy for us. So I agree with Mr. Sherbin. There really needs to be a push at a state level with our legislators. Simplify it. Help our seniors who are on those fixed incomes. We have to operate under Ohio Revised Code and what the law says. Our options are limited when it comes to funding. It was ruled unconstitutional many, many years ago, and the state hasn't fixed it. There is an overreliance on property taxes, but unfortunately, this is the world that public school districts have to live in. So please contact your legislators as well.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the business part of our agenda. We have approval and signing on the minutes of the January 21st meeting. Does anyone have questions for those minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the January 21st minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Give me a minute. In these meeting minutes from this month, per Allison's comments, did we have listed in here anything related to leaps? Because I'm now going back through, down through it.
I, I would have to pull up that agenda.
I'm in it right now.
Do you remember, Jack, did we approve kindergarten and leaps in January?
Yes.
At the January special meeting or the 21st?
I think January regular meeting. I'm in the regular meeting.
It would be under Treasures Consent Items. Keep going up. All the way. More.
I can't even memorize it.
Right here, scroll down, right here. So item F, that's $140. It was $1,250.
I will approve the minutes as written, just because they're accurate, but I do want to acknowledge Allison's comments that in that meeting, I did ask for the current year's tuition, was given wrong information, and did vote on this. And I just want to acknowledge that you are correct. That did in fact happen, but these minutes are reflective of the details and are accurate, so I will vote yes.
Mr. Stovey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes, we'll move on to Treasures Consent Items.
For your consideration, we do have the Treasures Monthly Report. I do want to point out, cash flow at this time of year, as you can see on our, on our reports, is very tight in between tax collections. We're running with a negative unencumbered balance right now, so cash flow in during, between December and our next tax advance won't be until next Tuesday. So the tighter our budget gets, the harder it is to ensure that we're paying our bills timely, that, so I just wanted to point that out, as well as on our monthly reports. If you look at our general fund, our salaries are at 51% right now, and our benefits are at 22%. So salary and benefits for us currently are at 73%. The average school district in Ohio is probably closer to 78%, possibly even a little over 80%. So we have significantly tightened our budget. Those reports are available on our website under this agenda. And let me just get back to the agenda. So we have no advances, return of advances, or transfers this month. We do have an appropriation amendment, as well as the approval of the then-and-now purchase orders, and that's all of the Treasures Consent Items.
Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve the Treasure Consent Items?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stovey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next up is our Superintendent's Consent Items.
For your consideration, we have a couple donations as listed there. Certified, classified, supplemental contract recommendations, mostly for spring or some resignations. Salary changes due to additional hours. A team, our baseball team is traveling and using our name, so we have to recognize that we acknowledge that they are using our Avon Lake name. Kent State University College Credit Plus Memorandum of Understanding, which is the yearly contract that we have to be able to offer CCP classes to our kids, and field experience to have, and student teachers come to Avon Lake to have their field experience, and a revision of a previously approved item, just an amount change.
Pretty short list this month. Any questions on those? Can I have a motion to approve the Superintendent's Consent Items?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stovey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This is the resolution of, for the Ohio Athletic Association Annual Membership. This could have gone up in the consent agenda. I'm not sure why it wasn't, but that's okay. It's just an annual membership that we approve every year.
Can I have a motion to approve the OHSA resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mr. Stovey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. Baker, anything else to cover tonight?
No, I just want to thank Dr. Remy and all of his staff and help and our basketball, travel basketball for an amazing event last night. I heard it went off without a hitch. It was sold out, and all of those proceeds are going to support some of the extracurricular activities pre-K to 12 in our school district. So a big shout out to them. I heard it was fantastic. Sorry I missed it.
You buried the lead there, because Dr. Dv's athleticism was on full scale. He grabbed a couple rebounds and dished the ball around. It was great to see, Jack, and actually, a couple of our principals are pretty good basketball players. Ms. Langle from Troy, she definitely knows what she's doing out there, and, yeah, we had Nick and Mr. Ray at the high school. So Westview, yeah, we had really good representation across all the buildings, as well as from the, the travel community, travel basketball folks. So I was impressed. I thought it was going to be a bludgeoning, and the teachers and staff and, they hung in there.
So I didn't stay to the end. What was the final score?
I didn't stay to the end.
Or were we not keeping score?
I didn't either. I had to leave and deal with the school closing. But I did show everybody why I was a swimmer in high school and not a basketball player.
Fair enough.
It was a two-point game at the end of the first quarter.
Wow.
But, but I, I think the Wizards, all their points came on dunks, and all of our points came on gifted baskets where they let us shoot a few times. But it was still, it was, it was great to see all the camaraderie, and, you know, I'm a few years removed from the travel basketball days, but just seeing all those kids who, and, you know, it wasn't just athletes there, but, you know, a lot of young families bringing their whole crew. It was, it was fun checking everybody in yesterday, so.
And I just want to remind, since you brought it up about coffee talks, the first one is the first week in March on Wednesday, and it's at The Kitchen, so not, 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 but, so I don't know about their coffee pots. I don't know how it's going to taste, but please join us if you'd like to come and have a conversation with us.
It's Thursday.
Oh, it's Thursday, I'm sorry.
Anything else for the board? Can I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stovey?
Yes.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 7:24 PM.